You got Tom coming? Lynn Taylor, how are you?
He is supposed to be here, I have not heard from Tom.
Lynn is supposed to be here?
Yes.
Tom always comes right at the last second, so if I wait ten seconds, he'll probably come through the door. How are you looking? We've certainly got enough people.
Yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, it's seven PM, let me call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for Tuesday, April seventeenth, twenty eighteen. Let me appoint Nelson into a voting position in for Mike. And remind everybody who's gonna address the board to be sure and sign in on the clipboard here, and make sure the microphone is turned on so the folks at home can hear you. Our next planning board meeting after tonight is May first, twenty eighteen, at seven PM in this room. I don't have any other preliminary announcements. Tim, do you have a planning zoning administrator's report?
No, I do not.
Any questions by members of the board for the staff? Moving past that to item three on our agenda is consideration of planning board nomination for NRPC Commissioner to be sent to the Town Council, and we have the nomination of Tim Tenhav.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in your packets you'll find a memo addressed to Bob Best from Becky Thompson, the Town Council's executive secretary. Tim, who is here this evening, has expressed interest in being appointed to the NRPC, and in order for that to take place, the council needs a recommendation from the planning board per the statute.
Excellent. Hi, Tim, good to see you.
Good evening.
Please introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about your background, and have, let's just have a little conversation about your interest on NRPC.
Sure, so my name is Tim Tenhav, I live at five Windy Hollow Lane. I have been in town pretty much most of my life. I have served this town in multiple ways, in fact, I was a member of the NRPC as the Town Council representative from two thousand seventy to two thousand ten. So I'm pretty familiar with what they do, as be, I'm also an alternate member on the Conservation Commission, and I work with the Commission involves the NRPC off and on quite a bit. We've done, they've done special projects for us, mainly lately their GIS projects and things like that, so, so again, I have some familiarity with what they are. What I'm really hoping to do is represent our town at a more regional level, beyond just being active here in town. I, I, I think that I can provide insight to the NRPC as to what our needs are. I think I'm fairly familiar with what's going on in our town, and I, I hope to represent us all well as part of the NRPC.
Thanks, Tim. Dialogue from the board, I know that we all know Tim pretty well, or at least many of us do. Nelson?
Yeah, I know Tim pretty well, and I know he's got it, but I would like to ask him a couple favors, if you will.
Sure.
On behalf of the planning board, to, if you can give the planning board feedback on regional planning things that affect this board, we'd appreciate anything, any feedback you can give us, assuming you're appointed with it.
Yeah, no, I would be happy to be, to do that.
And the other thing is, I don't know if you're aware, but the, NRPC is currently working on a project for the planning board to make a map of sidewalk planning for Route Three from Bedford to Nashua. And that's in progress, there was some material presented at the, at the voting on April the tenth, and we got some feedback from the public on that, and they're, they're doing that for us, and I wanted you to be aware of it.
Oh, great, thank you.
And otherwise, thank you for your service, I appreciate your stepping up to the plate.
Anyone else?
I'll echo the same things, thank you for your service, I've known you for a few years now, and I think Town Council and Conservation Commission and all the things that you've done have been great contributions. I think you've been a supporter of the planning board when you've been in a position to do so. I couldn't think of any reason why we would not want to have you serve on the NRPC. I appreciate you doing that, and they're great folks over there that have really been helpful with us with this sidewalk effort, and, if I could vote twice, I would.
Anybody else have comments or questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I think we could not ask for a better person to be our representative, and I would like to make a proposal that we send the formal notice to the, exact, to the Town Council that we support Tim Tenhav one hundred and ten ninety percent.
Cool, one hundred.
That should be.
That should be a nomination.
Oh, sorry.
Per the statute, anyway.
I would like to nominate, Mr. Chairman, on the basis that we couldn't nominate a better person.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion? Nelson has a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining, five, zero, zero? So that'll get transmitted to the Town Council, I don't know whether they have a meeting this week or would act on it that quickly, but they may. Tim may know better.
I'll be letting Becky know first thing in the morning, and she'll organize from that point.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Tim, thanks for coming in, thanks for doing it.
Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is item four, Charles Morgan is the applicant, and five twenty-six DW LLC is the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of a waiver of full site plan review for the addition of seventy-six outdoor, oh, sorry, four has been withdrawn, but we have to read it anyway.
You should read it in.
Yep. Seventy-six outdoor parking spaces for use between November first and April first, the parcels located at five twenty-six Daniel Webster Highway in the C-two general commercial and Oxford Conservation Districts, and Wellhead Protection Area, tax map five D-two lot one. This item is continued from our February sixth, two thousand and eighteen meeting, and there's an indication that the applicant has withdrawn this request by email of April sixth. Does that require any action on our behalf, just because of that? Okay, then moving past item four on our agenda to item five is Charles Morgan as the applicant, and five twenty-six DW LLC as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a site plan to construct a twenty-one thousand sixty-nine square foot single-story storage facility in a two-bay auto detailing shop, the parcel's located at five twenty-six Daniel Webster Highway in the C-two general commercial and Oxford Conservation Districts, and Wellhead Protection Area, tax map five D-two lot one. The item is continued from the February sixth, twenty eighteen meeting. Before we begin or go further, Tim, I am going to recuse myself and turn the gavel over to our esteemed.
Oh, good.
Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we will like to make, you'd like to make a bit of a presentation, and we can see where we go from here, please.
I appreciate that, Attorney Greg Michael with Eric Mitchell on behalf of Charlie Morgan and five, five, what is it, five twenty-six DW Highway, the old Xylas site. I know the board is familiar with this particular property, it's been before the board on a number of occasions. The board is familiar that Mr. Morgan has expanded the storage facility, produces very little traffic, and he would like to, again, probably this would be the last expansion for this particular site, and it's in the north, north, kind of the northwesterly corner of the parcel. You can see it, it meets the setbacks, it meets zoning, and there's some discussion, I know in the, where it mentions the auto detailing, that's there now, it's in one of, it's in the, kind of the back building that you see, the first building, second building, it's there now, the plan is to move it from the, from the back building where it is to the new building, so that really isn't a new, a new item that, on, on-site. They clean cars and do detailing, that's all they do, they're not doing repairs, they're not doing maintenance, they're not doing those sorts of things. People that bring their cars in for storage sometimes like them cleaned and waxed and that type of thing, so that's, that's an activity that's been there quite some time. I note that we're here for acceptance for public hearing, I'm, I'm aware of that, I'm also aware that Tim has recommended a May fifteenth follow-on date, we have no particular objections because there may be some issues between the towns consulting engineers, the staff reports, and comments that we may make tonight regarding this, regarding this particular proposal. I'd like to talk about a couple of things that I noticed. Again, the board's familiar with the site, and Olivera can talk about drainage and so forth, but there's been some discussion about the sidewalk, and I, the sidewalk, there are two kind of issues floating around, one's the sidewalk, one is kind of containing, compressing the two entrance areas, and if you've read some of the staff reports, you'll see that. As far as the sidewalk is concerned, in two thousand and fifteen, the matter was before the board. I, I was not here, I was not part of those proceedings, I wanna make that admission now, but at that time, there wasn't easement, in fact, I have a copy of the recorded easement plan for the sidewalk running the length of the property. Now, it was an interesting sidewalk, because if you read the notes on the plan, there's an easement ostensibly to the town for the sidewalk. Interestingly enough, it also includes that the owner would maintain it, which is kind of a funny situation, I'm not saying it's illegal, it isn't, but ordinarily, when sidewalks are, are developed and easements are granted to the town, it becomes a town responsibility, not the landowner's responsibility. In this instance, I've spoken with Mr. Morgan, I know that there was an instance, maybe one or two, where a vehicle may have encroached into the sidewalk area, because it sits back from the road, it's not on the road, most of it, it, there's, there's, even in, in some of the area, there's a grassy strip between the, the marked sidewalk on the, on the parking area, there's a white line that clearly delineates it, there's also cross hatching that was required by the board, that's been installed at the entrance areas. So that the sidewalk, as it's called, was installed, it was properly painted, and I recognize, again, and I've, I've kind of reprimanded politely Mr. Morgan on the requirement that we not have anything parking in that area. It would be very difficult to block it, when I say block it, I mean, there's some talk about, you know, putting in, you know, this just doesn't lend itself to curbing and that type of thing, because we're gonna run into some drainage problems and I think other safety issues doing that. We think the sidewalk is adequate, there are very few people that use it, but I'll, I know that the board is sensitive to this, sensitive to sidewalks, I understand that, but we do have one in place, and I think the, 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 the report I'm reading maybe had been from a person who wasn't familiar with the fact that this was, that this was addressed back in two thousand and fifteen. So if the board has other comments about the sidewalk, I'd be happy to hear them, but I've indicated to you that, number one, we are prepared to continue maintaining it and plowing it, we will see that that's done, and I'm telling you that we're gonna do our level best to make sure that there's no encroachments into the sidewalk area. So I'd like to stop there, because I know that's one of the items that was part of the focus of the, on the items, if you will, that I read in the staff report. Or I'll continue, Mr. Chairman.
Please do, please continue, we'd like to have all your thoughts and comments.
Let me talk about the, I'd like to address the, the entrances, and I've advised my client that when a matter comes before the board, the board, it's, under the board's prerogative to ensure that the site, to the best you can, bring it into better compliance. You've done it before, you did it with the Allstate Building, I remember that, where there was a wide open area, and the board insisted that the access points were reined in for safety, safety issues. And there's been one or two other occasions that I can't quickly recall, but I know that the board has made an effort to try and gain some compliance when possible, and Mr. Morgan is prepared to work with the board, and I spoke with Eric Mitchell this morning about this, to kind of rein in the entrance ways, getting them into conformance, but we wanna do it in a way that I think, and I'll, I think I'll let Eric address it, that doesn't involve curbing. The minute we start putting curbing on this parcel, we run into, again, moving drainage around, and we really don't wanna do that. The drainage works, the drainage is effective, and if we start putting granite curbing in, we're gonna start moving water into places that we may not wanna move water, and it may not be a good place to move water. So we are prepared to try and move the second access, the southerly access, where we can from a God Bridge Road, I believe that was the comment from your, from your consultants, and also, again, my, our thoughts are to possibly rip up some pavement, install some landscaping, make the entrance look maybe a little bit more attractive, also use, I believe Charlie's used some cedar fencing in some of the areas, and maybe make a little bit of a fence sweep coming in, to actually make it look a little more dynamic, a little more architecturally pleasing, without the need for, you know, concrete bounds, which really don't accomplish a whole lot in this instance. So I'd like to think that by the fifteenth, we can bring in, or before that time, we can get you a plan that shows, I'm, I'm using the term, you know, as best we can, some compliance with your access and entry regulations, which I think is the driving force behind the comment that we read, so I wanna say that. I think I'm gonna let Eric speak to some of the other technical issues, I think a lot of that's been addressed, Eric, if my memory serves me correctly, but if you could kind of highlight some of the points that were being made, I'd appreciate that.
Sure. My name is Eric Mitchell, my office prepared the plans. In the staff review, it talks about the, plans have been reviewed by the towns consultant, but there are things that were in the staff report initially from February first, I think the date was, that have not been addressed. Some of the things from the review consultant are the same as what's in the staff report, but it is true that we have not addressed all the things in the staff report, and that's, I believe, the basis for the recommendation, that if the plan is, receives acceptance tonight, that it be continued to the fifteenth. And we do plan on meeting the, addressing those concerns, it's in the staff report, well ahead of time, so it can be rereviewed in that. The two issues, one relative to the sidewalk, Attorney Michaels has already talked about, and, and yes, we can reduce the entrances, right now, they're, I know, anywhere from forty, fifty, maybe even sixty feet of pavement, we can reduce them to the town's maximum, which I think is thirty-six. Normally, you would have, if it was just a road, you might have twenty-four feet, but where the storage of RVs and that, which are longer vehicles, it would be helpful to have a little bit wider area so they can turn and get in. So we can do that, to cut the pavement down so the entrances are well-defined, and do whatever is, we, we come up with either landscaping or fencing, just to make sure everyone driving down the road knows exactly where to go to pull in, so we can do that. Other things relative to the plan, a lot of them are notes, verifying the things relative to lighting, we have lighting on the new building, there were some questions about lighting on existing buildings, so that there isn't, there are items to address that need to be put on the plan, but I don't see that they, amongst them, they are very difficult to do, we did not do them before this meeting, and so I would apologize for that, but we can do those.
Well, can I, can I first sort of reflect back on the sidewalk? And I remember the discussions we had, and it's going back some time. I think the concept we came up with, and somebody will correct me if I'm wrong, is that where the sidewalk runs by your, where the vegetation is, not where your entrances are. The idea was that sidewalk there would be raised to give a little bit of pedestrian safety, to stop the cars running onto it, which is what they do now, or have done now, let's put it that way. I thought the idea was had a bit of raised sidewalk, then dropped it down to go across your road, up again behind the vegetation, down again for your road, and then up again to merge with the, the rest of the sidewalk. Am I right, Nelson? You're the sidewalk king.
Well, king is probably not the right word, but I think that I had a concept, I know we talked about the concept, and I thought there were going to be stops along there, all the way along, set back far enough so that cars pulling up.
I think the wheel stops you're talking about, the concrete wheel stops, yes.
Yeah, that would stop cars from driving onto the sidewalk. Obviously, that wasn't even done, and I think the present system is in failure, and I'd like to address that further as we.
So one way or another, we want that sort of something addressed on that, does that make good sense?
Yeah, we, we'll certainly take another look at that, but again, part of the issue of pedestrian safety will somewhat be resolved by reducing and blocking the any of the maximum.
Somebody's microphone wasn't on.
Well, no.
You're not talking.
Again, I, I would point out that part of the pedestrian safety aspect, which I understand, will help be resolved by our confining the entry and access points, and I think that will help a lot.
Okay.
Because it'll, we've got the markings for the entry and access now, but you're right, it's all smooth right across.
It's all smooth, I think if you could.
So I, I think if we clean that up, and we can certainly take another look at what that sidewalk is, and propose some concrete blocking, that, that may make some sense.
That would make sense instead.
And, and I just wanna make sure that we can maintain it effectively, the minute, you know.
Oh, yes.
The minute you put blocking in, you run into some other issues regarding, you know, keeping the snow off it and that sort of thing, so it's something I'd want Eric to take a peek at, so that we can make sure that we're not running into a problem there, because we've got sidewalks now, that in the winter, we don't really do, with all due respect to the town, I don't think we do a lot of sidewalk plowing and maintenance, at least I've.
Um, well.
Noticed a lot of it, and maybe I'm wrong.
You're wrong, sir, I think the, the town, to be honest, usually, even the sidewalk out near where I live, which is on the south, south fire station area, that, the gentleman goes down there with his little nice machine, within a couple of days, and it's beautifully.
I guess I'm driving by at the wrong time, Alistair.
Yeah, yeah, I think you are, yeah.
But that's okay.
Actually, to be fair to the town, although I know the town don't like the concept, I think they do a pretty good job, and they have very expensive machines to do the sidewalks.
Well, we'll be happy to see if they'll plow those.
All right, okay, point taken.
Yeah, we, we'll certainly take another look at that, and I think it would be consistent to coordinate that with the reduction of the.
Okay.
Of the accessway, I think that makes sense.
I think that would probably meet everybody's general ideas.
I don't think so.
You don't think so? Well, could you explain what you'd like to see?
What do you want?
Well, I wanna see a sidewalk there, I wanna see a sidewalk from, on the front edge of that property, from end to end.
Well, are you talking about against the road, I mean, ordinary sidewalk?
Probably, probably that's the best place to put it.
But, but surely there's some grass verge between.
Yeah, but there's, there's.
Where there's grass now, part of that would be replaced by sidewalk.
The, the one trick to that, Nelson, is with the STA site that was just recently approved, the end of their sidewalk is, right now, coordinated to connect with the sidewalk where this exists today.
Yes.
Yes, we have to make some adjustments.
There would need to be some adjustments.
There would be some adjustments, yeah. But that's what should be there, in my view.
Well, I, I appreciate that, and we'll take a look at that, Nelson. I'm not guaranteeing that may come back, but we'll, we'll look at it.
Well, you said that.
And maybe with the other changes that we're suggesting, it may be, maybe something you're still willing to look at, but I hear you, I understand where you're coming from, I'm hearing you.
In the, in the staff memo dated April thirteenth, there's talk about review on the drainage, because when you, your existing plan or existing site plan shows gravel, well, I know from driving around there this morning, it's fully paved, the whole of the, what is said to be gravel, no longer is gravel, it's asphalt all the way around. Did anybody do any revision of the drainage?
I'd like to have Erica address that.
Yes, of course.
Yes, we've looked at that, I mean, part of the labeling on the plan is not correct, it says gravel, it was gravel initially.
I know that was.
And that's, and that's a text that did not get taken off, and yes, as you already know, it is paved all the way around the buildings. The drainage work that we did and the new drainage design, which has been sent to the town review consultant, as well as the alteration of train people at the state, does include all of the paving and the, the roof and that, so that even though it said gravel, which in, also that gravel doesn't, isn't considered to be impervious.
I am aware of that.
It's very similar to pavement, but it was labeled incorrectly, but our calculations have taken into effect that it was, that it's non-pervious asphalt. And the way that we are looking to do the drainage is that the water off of the eaves and off of the parking is gonna go into infiltration basins, so they would go along the building, so the water, won't be as much water leaving the site, it'll go back into the ground, and we have met with the Conservation Commission, and because we are in the Wellhead Protection District, and they are, they're okay with the plan as we had proposed it.
Okay, the other thing I noticed is a very large quantity of what I would call small trailers park, roughly where you're gonna put your new building, where are these gonna be stored in future?
I can ask Mr. Morgan?
Please, Mr. Morgan, please use the microphone if you wouldn't mind, sir. Sorry, you can take it with you and sit down again, please don't think you've gotta stand up.
I need the exercise.
All right.
Is this on?
There should be a green light, I think.
Test. It's on now.
It's on.
Hi, I'm Charlie Morgan, and I'm the owner of the property, thank you for your service. The trailers that, that are there are portable storage trailers, and my plan is to move all of those up to another property that I've recently purchased in Allentown.
Okay.
So with this, with this new building, you, you won't see any of that outside storage anymore.
That's a good answer, thank you very much indeed, sir. That's, it's just, it's nice to know, because, you know, when one wonders where you're gonna stick 'em.
I understand, okay.
The other question which I think was raised, and, I mean, I, I think the end, the corners of your, where's north, I, yeah, north, the northern corner of your second building, the one nearest the, the turnpike, that's a fairly, up there, that's right, that was, both corners there, that corner in particular, I would think would be quite difficult to get a fire engine round, I don't, I don't know if.
That's an existing building, that's the existing condition.
And, but is it still existing? Oh, all right.
I'm talking here.
I know that one's there, but I just wondered about the curb even, so.
That's the existing condition.
Just, okay.
It's bigger than you think.
Yeah, I, I drive big vehicles. And the other thing I just noticed as a result, and it's probably a joint exercise between you and Crowsnest Commercial Properties, are you gonna restore any sort of demarcation fence between the two properties? It's pretty well battered as a result, I mean, I'm not saying it's your fault, it's as much theirs as yours, but, yeah, that, there's, it's a pretty, it's a pretty difficult to know where, where, what, and how at that point, on there. Well, I ask you perhaps to talk with your neighbor, your future, or your pro, your new neighbor, and see if they can make some things, it might look a little better. I'd hate to see a school bus drive through what's there now by accident, you know, I'm, anyway. I, I think it would, you know, what they say, good fences make good neighbors, I believe, is a well-known proverb. Anyway, otherwise, we haven't actually accepted this for full review, may I, has anybody on the board got any further questions before we take that issue up?
I have some further comments, Mr. Chairman.
Please do.
I think, I think we're still very incomplete with this plan. I don't see, as I mentioned earlier, the sidewalk is an issue, and they said they'd look at that further, but we have seen nothing about the, I have seen nothing about the architecture or the view of what this building is going to look like, plumped right there on the face of Route Three in a very central part of our town. I wanna know what it's gonna look like. I see no plans for landscaping or any kind of amenities to the project that would make it look attractive to the passing public. So our, our architecture is missing, and our landscaping is missing, in addition to the sidewalk. There's no lighting plan that I saw, although there may be some little hint at it on these, these contours that were drawn around the new building, I'm not really sure, we received these plans quite late. The, and the other is the drainage review, is to, what has been submitted, and has the whole site plan as it's proposed here been submitted to CLD?
Yes, CLD has completed their initial review.
In this configuration.
In this configuration.
And they're in the process of doing that, is that right?
No, CLD has completed their first review, I am not sending anything back to CLD until we're at a point where the board has had their input and the other comments and conditions have been addressed, so that I'm not sending it back and forth and spending Mr. Morgan's money unnecessarily.
Okay, I, I don't disagree with that, but I do wanna be assured.
My, my understanding from the CLD review, and the reason why my comment still stood about the gravel, was that I want CLD to verify, it's been, it's my understanding in the response from the applicant that they have addressed that, that they've addressed the issue of the impervious surface and the gravel, I just wanna make sure that it's verified, that CLD agrees with the approach they've taken to change the report to address that. That's ultimately one of the conditions that I recommend as a condition of approval when we get to that point, but overall, the confidence between myself and Public Works is that the drainage will be handled, and any comments that CLD has are easily, are easy enough to review and to address by the applicant. to address by the applicant.
Okay, thank you, Tim. So then I guess I'm more along the lines of continuing this till...
Oh, I don't, Mr. Chairman, I was...
Yeah, just looking at acceptance.
Mr. Disco, I wasn't looking for approval. We haven't even officially accepted this for review.
I'm saying it's short of things to even accept, but that's my opinion.
I would agree with you if we had a standard for what is an acceptable plan, but I think there's enough here, and now that it has actually gone through CLD's initial peer review, I feel comfortable that you could start the clock on this at this stage.
Therefore, on the recommendations of the director, do we have a motion? Thank you, Lynn, could you make...
Also, I'll also move that we accept that it is substantially complete.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second. Segmented by Mr. Koenig, may I take a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Two. So it carried three, two. The two are Mr. Disco, Estenica. All right. I think you've heard a lot from us, and I think we understand that you recognize there's things that have got to be done. Does there any purpose, first of all, is there anybody in the public who want to make any comments? Will you please remember to sign in after you, please speak from there, sir, but you will need to fill in our clipboard when you're finished.
Yes, Don. All right, Don Minor, 65, Donovan Court, lifetime member of Town of Merrimack, in case people don't know who I am. I'm in support of this, and I kind of have a little taken back with the whole sidewalk issue here. The whole front of this building is a sidewalk, if you really look at it. I used to work at Xylas, and I'd like to thank Mr. Morgan for buying the building and making it not look like a dump anymore. For a long time, that place was overgrown, no lighting, no nothing, okay? So I think he's done a great job with this building. He gives back to the community, I don't know if you're aware of that. Nelson's goal comes to the farmers market once in a while, but he's in support of the Merrimack Farmers Market. I see Girl Scouts there selling cookies in the parking lot. So I think it would be a detriment to really kind of give them a hard time on this anymore than it has to be. I understand you guys have rules and regulations, but this, just listening to Nelson talking about moving the sidewalk onto the road, I think that's ridiculous, because you've got a good, I don't know, I've not put a tape measure on it, but if you go from the white line to the edge of the road, as we say, two feet, and I would probably say that the grass median there is another five or six feet wide. So the cars go by there fast enough as it is. I've never seen a car in his parking lot parked encroaching on the sidewalk. Okay, I see cars for sale, I don't see anything on the sidewalk. You can disregard me all you want, Nelson, that's fine. But we work the farmers market, and we're very careful about not putting cars in there. We actually pay attendance to be there, to not have anybody encroach that area. So I'd like to just address that, being, I'm also on the Merrimack Ag Commission, so I'm not here just to support him because of the farmers market, but as a taxpayer and as a resident, the water drainage, not an issue. You go to Dunkin' Donuts, it's an issue. They got granite curbing, okay? They don't?
No.
They don't? Okay, Nelson, why don't you go over there? I go there five times a day, every day.
Dunkin' Donuts...
They don't have granite curbing?
They don't have a sidewalk.
They don't have a sidewalk?
No.
Okay. I guess I'm wrong, but I go there all the time. I'm just in support of Mr. Morgan. I'm not here to get in an argument with Nelson on this, but as a taxpayer, I think he's done an outstanding job with this, and adding a building with any landscaping is going to look a hell of a lot better than a sandpit that we already currently have, okay? So this is just my two cents, or 25, or $1.50. Good luck.
Thank you very much. And please don't, I hope Mr. Morgan doesn't think that any of the discussion in this meeting has any criticism of what he's done. I would echo every bit of the comments you made of improvements to how much better the site looks. I mean, I've only been in town 25 years, but I remember Xylas, and I now know that what we see there is infinitely better than what was there before.
He's done a great job.
I agree. I'm not arguing. All we're trying to do is ensure that the site, by and large, complies with the town's ordinances, which we are bound to do within this committee.
And I understand it.
And if there are things that don't quite meet it, then there are ways and means of getting variances to adjust them, but ideally, we'd like to push him a little bit towards where the town standards are. That's all this is doing. We're not criticizing.
I'm not saying you're criticizing. I'm sitting here listening to, it sounds like we have a grand scheme of having sidewalks all the way to Bedford. Let me just say that I very rarely see anybody walk across his parking lot and use this park. Okay, you probably have three houses between Reeds Ferry Lumber, then you have the Auto Place, Shaw's, but there's like three houses on that side of the road. No one uses that side. The people that live in the Commons don't even walk across, they're going to walk across, they're going to play Frogger across Route 3.
I'd like to just challenge you a little bit. If you go to the master plan for the town, which was conceived in 2013, 14...
Yep.
The town did, and everybody, that's for Planning Board, through the Town Council, everybody says in favor of that we would like to have a pedestrian walkway from Bedford through to Nashua. Now, there's going to be places where it can't easily be done along in the Daniel Webster Highway. Now, if you voted on the 10th of April, you will see that some of us gave you forms to try and say what you thought it. The council, the Planning Board, the town master plan is trying to get as much as possible of a sidewalk. It would be better for all of our waste lines. Now, all we're trying to do is encourage where we have a development opportunity to put sidewalks in place. Whether they're all used today or tomorrow, I don't know, but the principle is, we should have sidewalks. Lynn?
Every time we talk about sidewalks, everybody says, nobody walks there. But maybe if we had sidewalks, people would walk there.
But there is a sidewalk there, is what I'm saying. He's got 200-foot sidewalk.
I'm just saying, there's a need for, if you have just that one set of sidewalks, that's not there. We're trying to get sidewalks across the entire...
I understand, I just don't see the need for granite curbing.
I'm not addressing that, I'm just saying, we're trying to get sidewalks along there so that people can walk. And I think Charlie's...
What's that?
I think you're acknowledging that.
I concur. I have no problem with that at all.
Yeah, I'm just...
Okay? But what I, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, I've been there for about three years. I'm extremely sensitive about safety, I'm extremely sensitive about aesthetics, I think that property is a trophy piece of property right now, and I'm not done, okay? When I put these two big cupillos on the main building, I think you're going to say, what the hell, what's he thinking? Okay? Because I think I have a good vision, and I know what I'm doing, okay? And I've been there for three years, and with respect to this sidewalk, in my view, there's nothing wrong with, what triggered this whole thing was that one of my employees, one of my trucks, I wanted to sell it, and I told him to bring it down, and he inadvertently pocked the nose of the truck on the sidewalk, okay? Wrong, he shouldn't have done it. Second problem was, I never instructed my plowing people, I do all my own maintenance, all my own plowing, I never instructed them, okay, to specifically plow that sidewalk, I missed it, okay? I simply missed it. I can assure you moving forward, that the sidewalk will always be plowed and taken care of on my nickel.
Thank you.
Okay? Now, you're talking about moving this sidewalk onto the traveled way into the green area. Do you realize that's going to be 10 feet from the road? It's going to be very, very close, and talk about danger? Somebody comes off the road, the chances of hitting somebody on that sidewalk are tremendous. Where the sidewalk sits right now, in my view, is safe. It's very clear where people can walk. If you people want me to put some bushes along the edge to prevent any cars from coming, I have no problem with that. If you want me to put some concrete stops along there to keep people away, no problem. But to ask me to spend the money to move that sidewalk onto the green strip with a curb, to me, is a burden that I'm very uncomfortable with, and I'm going to ask you not to consider that.
Mr. Morgan, what all, I think Mr. Disco was trying to suggest was a possibility. Now, you made your point, I think we must probably recognize that you're doing, you're trying to do the very best, and we'll wait and see what your final plans come up.
Well, I'm talking about the safety.
I agree with you, sir.
Okay, all right, okay.
I fully agree with you. You're going to provide the safest possible solution, whether it's, what, I'm not sure I would have supported, Mr. Disco, but he just tossed up an idea. We'd like you to consider all the ideas, come up with your final plan, and we'll go ahead with hopefully approving it on that date. But I would be the first to concur that you have improved that site out of all unbelievably.
I'm not done.
Well, all part of your elbow, keep working at it, sir.
I will, I got to have money to do it. If you broke me doing the sidewalk, that doesn't help me.
No, point taken.
We got some money coming back here on my peer review, I haven't heard anything about that yet.
Well, we're not going to get involved into that.
Every dime gone?
The peer review money goes until we have a final approval.
I think we've... Is there any other member of the public who wishes to address the board? I somehow thought you did. I saw you there.
My name is Bob McCabe, I live on Wilson Hill Road, Merrimack. You all know me, I manage the farmers market. We've been a tenant of the Morgan family for many years. We appreciate being there, we'd like to continue the relationship. And when Charlie painted those lines a couple of years ago, the fire safety lines and the entrance to the sidewalks, we were told what to do with them, be aware of them, not to let people park in them, that type of thing. So our parking attendants did clarify that to the customers and vendors appearing every Wednesday afternoon. We just think he does a wonderful job. We'd like to see it continue for all the town. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, is there, you seem to have indicated quite happily that you will go, are you looking for May the 15th?
Yeah, that's the date.
Yes, it's the date that Tim suggested.
The reason, no, go ahead.
I think that gives us enough time to get the final stuff.
Okay.
Have we seen the CLD stuff? Have we seen that yet, Eric?
We have one letter that came back, responded to it.
We've only done one round.
Okay. Well, I think it just gives us time to take a look at things and go over the elevations you may be looking for. We'll talk about the sidewalk issue, that's...
What I would ask...
I see that, I've heard it, I'm listening.
If we're shooting for the 15th, what I would ask is that we have revised information submitted by no later than Friday, May 4th, to ensure that we have the week to review and get distributed to all the departments.
Thank you.
Based on everything we've heard, could I have a motion that allows for continuance to that date?
I'll also move.
Thank you very much.
A second.
All right, so we have a motion to continue this matter to the 15th of May in this room at 7:00 with no further notice to a butters. Is that the motion?
That is.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? No, so it's 5-0. Continue to that date, and thank you, gentlemen, for your...
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your...
Thank you.
You can come back, Mr. Chairman.
Hey. Don't take anything personally, please.
That's your fault.
You may not even know the connection, but your company made one of your yellow trailers available to my barbecue team all summer last year.
Thank you, sir.
But who's counting?
Thank you, thank you, sir, but you really have, the site is, I must admit, I would say your site is so much better. Your site is, and just keep going.
We're happy to hear that, thank you.
Good, 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 good.
Almost filled up again for next year.
Well, that's what's amazing. I mean, I never knew the demand was there.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, it's huge.
Connecticut, they come from all over.
Really?
Well, it's no place to put it. You spend a half a million dollars, what are you going to do, put it outside?
No.
Bring it in my place, the floors are all green, it's spotless, there's no windows, we got security, we got...
I wonder if you've got everything there? I just didn't know they came from that far away.
Oh, yeah. Particularly the big guys. Particularly the big guys.
Getting those big monsters indoors is really hard.
Yeah, but you've got a lot of people that emotionally attach to it. Mostly, whether it's a roof...
Yeah, yeah, I think.
Or a million seven...
Or an XJS.
It doesn't matter. They want it protected.
You're right. It's that much.
Thank you for that. We've got a couple of more agenda items we've got to tackle.
No, no.
Thank you, sir. I'm glad to say hello. Next item on our agenda is item six, which is Carol Ann Karen as the applicant and owner, review to allow a home occupation permit for a swimming instruction business, the parcels located at 12 Collins Avenue in the R1 Residential and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 6D Lot 564. Tim, anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Just refer you to the memo that Robert Price has put together on this. This is before you. This business actually is existing, has existed for a number of years. We were made aware of it relatively recently, and had to go through an enforcement action as the, there was no home occupation permit anywhere in our files for the business to be established at the location. Robert's memo outlines the items from the application, as well as his interpretation that as it's currently proposed and existing, it does not quite comply with the requirements of the ordinance. Robert's interpretation is that the additional square footage of the garage with living space cannot be relied upon by the applicant to be utilized for the 25% requirement for the home occupation, so if the board were to move forward with this and grant it approval, would need to be conditioned upon relief from the zoning board for both that and potentially signage, depending on how things go.
Thank you for the introduction, Tim, and as you know, there's a couple of correspondents at the right time. Please remind me to make sure that I read them into the record if appropriate.
Please introduce yourself, sign in on the clipboard, and then tell us about what's going on.
Hi, I'm Carol Ann Karen, I'm at 12 Collins Avenue, and I did want to draw the board's attention to an error on the memorandum that you got.
What's the error?
It's on the proposed hours of operation, Friday should actually be 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM, not 10:00 PM.
Friday should be 7:00 AM to...
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM. So the Mondays are also 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM?
Monday is split, 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and then 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Tuesdays and Thursdays are 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM, Fridays are 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and then one Saturday a month, I do 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Okay.
One Saturday a month?
Correct. And that's in the wintertime.
So the latest hours of operation you have on here are 8:00 PM, which would be on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays?
That's correct.
Correct, okay. Thank you for correcting the error on that, that makes a lot more sense. Anything else that you'd like to tell us about what's going on? Tell us the whole story.
So when I started doing my research for my business, I actually came to the town and inquired about what I needed to do to get permission or whatnot. I was told that since I had off-street parking, and I was the only employee and the homeowner, and I was only going to be seeing one person at a time, that there was nothing further that I needed to do. So that's why when I got the notice from the town, I was taken a little back by having not complied. It certainly was not my intention to not do whatever I needed to do. I'm registered with the state of New Hampshire as a health club, I have my LLC registered with the state, and the issue came up that you'll see in the documentation that I submitted from the highway department of the driveway, and I think that's what started this, this whole issue for me, was that they're questioning what the approved driveway can be. driveway can be. Um, I actually didn't know about the sign requirements. Uh, so what we have decided to do is the sign on the mailbox was coming down anyway. Uh, the sign on the house, I wasn't aware that there was a restriction. I took it to be two by two, which apparently it's two square feet, which would actually be one by one. So what we're going to be-
No, two by one.
One by two, yeah, but close.
Two by one or one by one. One by one is not, that's one square foot.
Okay, so we're about three by one right now?
Yes.
So we're going to actually reduce the size of the sign that's on the house-
Okay.
-to bring it in compliance. Um, and then the only other thing that I, that I'm looking for really is a variance on the percentage of use. I actually have an indoor pool that I teach both learn to swim and coach swimming, including competitive swimmers and triathletes. Uh, I have the smallest pool possible to be able to do both of those actions. Um, that can be placed indoors. The building that the pool is in used to be our garage when we first moved into the house. We renovated it. It was another business before this, but the pool actually fits into one bay of a standard garage. And then to have access to a bathroom, there was originally a breezeway in between the garage and the regular part of the house. The bathroom is right on the other side of that breezeway, so our breezeway is now our waiting room. And we have enclosed off the house, so it's a completely separate portion. Nobody who is visiting the business can get into the house. It's all closed off. And there are two entrances to the bathroom. One is used when I have customers and one is used when it's just household people there. So we have taken steps to ensure that, you know, the people visiting the business are comfortable and, you know, in requirements with the state, have access to a restroom and shower and, and all that. So I think we're good there. Again, it's just, it's an indoor pool. It's gonna take some room. So to get it down to 25% of the livable area, if we're not including the livable area above the new garage, then, you know, that's, I, I don't see how we can do that, but I'm open to suggestions.
Okay. So, um, we'll have some questions for you about what you submitted to us for the application. There's a little bit of separation of jobs between what we'll review and what others in the town review. Um, and so we're looking at the appropriateness of doing a business in a neighborhood and all of the things that fall under that regulation. The 25% requirement, in order to get some relief or some variance from that, that's actually the zoning board that does that. Um, and there's an opportunity to bring that before them and explain why it is that you think that they should support it. Um, that's not a decision that we have the authority to make. We can consider all the other things related to your application and then, um, if it's the will of the board to do so, grant approval, subject to you going to the zoning board and getting that bit of relief.
Okay.
Tim probably explained, or the department probably did at some point.
Just to, to clarify and hopefully clear up some of the confusion, I think, that may have happened a few years ago. Uh, I'm not sure which department or who, because I know it predates my employment probably with the town. Uh, but for home occupation to not require coming to the planning board, uh, you, it, you've mentioned a couple of things, but there are a couple that you've done that would, number one is no visitors, customers or solicitations to visit the premises. As soon as you have people coming to the site, it requires a trip here to the planning board. So I'm not sure who gave you the information that you didn't need to, but whoever did that was incorrect. And I, unfortunately, we're now in this situation.
Right.
But, uh, so that, that I think is, I just wanted to make the board aware that that's one of the main reasons why this type of business, assuming you deem it as appropriate as a home occupation, would require a trip to the planning board and not be able to do it administratively.
Thank you for the explanation, Tim. And, um, I can't speak for the advice that you got a few years back any more than Tim can, but, um, we're a pretty open-minded board and we'd rather look at sort of as if it was fresh and new and not look at something and say, well, you know, how did you run your business for however long you've been running it without approval? And darn it, we're mad about them. That's not us. Not doing that. Um, but I do have some questions about what you proposed. All right, and I wanna make clear, during the hours of operation, you have just one client at a time coming?
Correct. All my sessions are all privates. So it's only one person in the pool at a time. Now, I do have some families that come, for example, mom with three of their kids, but it's only one person in the pool at a time.
Okay, and they all come in one car, obviously, if it's mom and the kids? And they're all doing their own individual lessons?
Yes.
Over the course of whatever that time period is?
Yep. The only exception would be every once in a while I, I hold a seminar and that's usually on a Wednesday night for as, as much as two hours.
How many people come to a seminar?
Uh, the most I've had is 10.
And what do they do at a seminar? Are they in the pool or are you just teaching them things?
No, it's just, um, teaching like, like you would go to a class or-
Okay.
Yep.
So when you get to the size, oh, go ahead, Lynn.
But there's no Wednesday hours here?
Correct.
So if you're gonna do the seminar, we have to have Wednesday hours in your application?
Okay.
Do you know when, how often you do the seminar? How frequently and what the hours would be?
I do once a month, January through April, and it's 7:00 to 9:00.
January through April, every Wednesday during?
No, once a month.
One time per month.
And that's 7:00 PM?
Correct.
To 9:00 PM? Okay.
Correct.
9:00 PM. And so, thank you for that. I think we can kind of add in the hours through the discussion that we have here. Um, the thing that we have to understand better is the parking situation for that, because home occupations, you gotta get the cars off the street.
Right.
Um, no matter what you're doing, if you've got cars on the street, we can't approve it. So that may mean that the seminar has to be either in a different place, or you have to break it up into smaller groups, or something has to go on because you don't have 10 spaces to park all that many cars.
Right.
Um, you probably have, when your construction is over, three, maybe four spaces available.
Well, that's part of the discussion is how many spaces can we have? Because the highway department has only approved us for the driveway immediately in front of the new garage.
Mm-hmm.
And what we wanted was the, in front of the new garage plus the space in between the old driveway and the new driveway.
My understanding is the width of that access was the issue for the driveway.
Yeah, that's what I could see from the plan. So the, in a residential neighborhood that you live in without a business, you can have your driveway laid out any way that you choose to, except for the part where it joins the road, is regulated for how wide that, we call it curb cut, can be. And it looks like what you've got drawn on the plan is that the curb cut that you'd like is the width of your building and then probably the width of the same amount more.
Right.
Full curb cut. And that's probably where you're getting the pushback from the building department. That doesn't comply with our regulations for a commercial site plan. Um, we don't have site plan regulations for a residential. So the building department is gonna be your limiter on that. They probably would allow you that amount of pavement, but you've gotta drive into it through, you know, 12 feet or whatever it is.
24 would probably be the max.
24 foot wide.
Okay. Which is, that was my misunderstanding because what we proposed was just based on what we saw around our neighborhood, which is pretty big driveway.
A few people with the whole front wide thing.
Yeah.
Um, there may be some things, so, uh, there's lots of ways that things can be in existence and be permissible and allowed, um, even without kind of having gone to the planning board or gone through different approvals, depending on how old they are and how long they've been there. And sometimes people are doing things that isn't really what the site plan ever, oh, actually, there's no site plan.
Right away permit from Public Works.
Yeah, what's that?
Or they may have never received the right of way permit from Public Works. It'd be my guess.
But surely, Tim, if you've got a double garage, you've gotta, you must be allowed to have a driveway width up to that double garage.
The 24-foot wide driveway would be more than sufficient.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
So question on that then. If I have the 20-foot, 24-foot driveway in front of the new garage, but I have my existing driveway, do I have to get rid of the existing driveway?
That's a question Public Works would have to-
Yeah, that's a Public Works. So then you're, two separate driveway entrances is something that they also look at and regulate and they may be particular about.
Typically, the distance between the-
But, but actually, looking at your plan, if you were to bend your existing driveway so it clipped into the 24-foot in front of the garage, you'd, you'd get the effect with that. I think it's the number of curb cuts, but you could bend that existing driveway here.
Connected your existing driveway into that area.
Just bend it into there and you, you've got what you're looking for. That would give you-
She wants to park cars there.
What's that?
She wants to park cars in there as well.
Yeah, I know. Well, you, there are things you could do.
There's a configuration that works, but that's gonna be more of the Department of Public Works and what they allow for the driveway permits.
And I will, I will caution the board, however, on this, is once you start getting into creating a parking lot in front of a residential building, are you therefore defeating the purpose of a home occupation?
Yes, I understand.
Indistinguishable from a residence?
Yep, okay. Um, although, you know, that depends on how the driveway's laid out. There's, there's some creative ways to do that that, um, don't necessarily look like a parking lot.
Well, Tim, I'm gonna have to say the house next door, which is number 10.
That's, that's the one I'm saying. I, I would-
I would guess that there's-
I went up there to-
I would guess that there was not a right of way permit drawn for that property.
And I mean, what, the, the amount of hardware that was on that driveway this morning?
Yeah.
Yeah, I went by this morning. I mean, there was about five cars. There was a backhoe and a bit, and a trailer, I think. So, I mean, really, all right, well.
Because the neighbors are violent.
I know, I know, I know.
But if you look at the driveway at 14, it's more of an example of something that starts out narrow and then gets a little bit wider to accommodate some more cars. And that's a perfectly normal residential driveway?
Yeah. I was looking about number 10, Mr. Chairman.
You know, I, I was, I knew that that was the one that you thought was a really wide driveway, but number 14 is a potential-
Yeah, that's a-
-example of something she could look at.
A good example of what you can do. Yes, good point.
So anyway, uh, so, let's talk a little bit more about your seminars and see if we can come up with some answers or solutions that we could support and permit, because if you got 10 and you're putting cars on the street, um, we would have to say no to that.
Yes, thank you.
Did you get a copy of that? Oh, good.
I did, yep.
Um, talk to, what are your choices in terms of some options that you could choose from for how to develop that without having anybody parking on the street?
Um, sorry, for the seminars?
Yes.
Okay, so the choice would either be have less people in attendance and do them more often, uh, or with, with the setback, the way the garage is, if our two out of three cars that are in our home right now are in the garage, we could potentially get one to two cars in front of that garage. So for a seminar, we could potentially, if, say we had three parking spaces on the side of the garage, not coming onto the road, but facing, I think that's north, I'm not sure, um, facing the, the neighbor's yard, basically.
Yep.
Um, then we could potentially have seven parking spaces-
Yep.
-off the road. That's not assuming that we attach the new driveway to the old driveway, which has a potential of-
So you're thinking that-
Seven itself.
In front of your new garage, you would have two. Is that right?
You'd get more than two in front of that.
Depends on how long they are, but, and then-
Correct.
In this area that we have to figure out the access to the roadway width, but three cars there. And that's, so I could count five. Where, how did you get to seven?
Well, like you said, depending on how big the cars are. The garage is setback.
If you're stacking them, there's, there is basically a little more than 30 feet from the edge of the pavement to, well, from the, it, I mean, the property line, that setback line is 30 feet back. So that line that goes across the front is your 30-foot front setback. So you could probably fit at least a couple of cars back to back if you allow stacking of the parking in that manner.
Well, 30 feet isn't gonna get you stacked cars. Um, I mean, I know that my truck is bigger than most, but a regular car, an SUV, is 16, 15 feet long. So putting two of those bumper to bumper, um, in a 30-foot area, you're gonna be inches from the building and inches from the road. Um, let's think about that a little bit and see if we can-
And I have no problem with reducing the number of people who can attend my seminars.
Yep.
That's not an issue for me.
Although, um, the other bit of that that we could take into consideration at least is, let's have a discussion, do people arrive as a family for your seminars too? Because then if husband and wife attend your seminar in one car, that, I, I'm counting the cars. I don't care how many people are in the building.
Right, yeah. Most of the time I have, I have at least one or two husband-wife attendees. And then I have, I have two people who consistently come and they're from the same neighborhood and they just come together. So-
So-
Usually it's five cars, most.
I think the way that the board would have to take it up is figure out how many cars we think you could fit and limit you to that number of cars. However many people that ends up being is up to you with your internal-
Carpooling.
Yes.
I, you know, and I know, know that it makes sense to tell clients they have to carpool together, but I think as you're booking people for your seminar, you have to keep in mind that you've got five parking, or four, or have six, or however many we think that there are.
Right.
Um, and, and if you put people in the street, somebody's gonna complain to Tim and they're gonna tell, tell you that you're out of compliance with your approval.
And it's, honestly, it's only once a month and it's, you know, four months out of the year. It's no worse than my neighbor having a party and taking up, you know, half the street.
I agree. Um, and that's something, well, that's a conversation we have frequently at these, because the neighbors will come and they'll talk about, you know, somebody parks in the street or, or this or that. And frankly, people park on the street all the time. Um, for these reasons you talked about, a guest, a neighbor, someone.
And I, I do make sure that, you know, the restrictions as far as parking during snowstorms, I do make sure that those are adhered to. If it's a major snowstorm, I just don't have business, so nobody's parking on the street, seminar or not. Um, and during the winter, it's always off-street parking. If somebody chooses to park on the street, you know, I don't tell them, no, go out and move your car. You know, that's their choice.
I, I will just say that the, the months that the seminars are proposed are all during the winter parking ban, so there is no on-street parking townwide from November through April, essentially.
Right, which is why I would cancel if it was snowing.
Yeah. Even when it's not snowing, there's a winter parking ban that runs all of those months that keeps road, cars, cars off the roads.
Right.
Um, not that it happens very often, but they do occasionally go out and do some winter maintenance, even when it's not snowing. Um, however, I, what you, the discussion you just had, um, if you're limited to, to running this business with parking that can fit in your parking areas, you do have to talk to your customers if they park in the street and get them to move it, because you're the one that's gonna be held to the standard. It's your business. Now, if they park on the, during the winter parking ban and they get towed, that is their issue too. But in order for you to have permission to do business here, you gotta keep all your customers on your, on your parking.
Okay, I'll gladly add that to my policies.
And it's only gonna be an issue for those seminars, so.
Right.
Why did you choose to do them January through April and not, you know, June through August or something when it's summertime?
Because they're all for triathletes and we get them in before triathlete season starts in June.
Oh, I see.
Yes.
I see. Um, it may be that there's some other choices around town to do a small seminar, like rooms in the library or different other places where you can get some public meeting space and not have to do it in your house.
Yep.
Um, and that may be a better solution for your neighbors, too.
It's a good idea.
I like the idea that during the, the swimming training, that you basically have one client at a time and maybe the next guy's arriving as the first one's leaving, but two cars or two clients or two families or whatever is not an issue with the amount of driveway that you got there. Um, I'm glad to hear that you're fixing the signage. Um, I'm curious that your plan says geothermal loop. You guys have geothermal heat? That's pretty cool.
No, we, we had considered it, but it was too expensive.
Oh, okay, so it's not there?
Yeah, no.
Was that a part of the addition or was that originally part of the plan for the house?
That was gonna be part of the addition, but like we said-
Didn't work.
Like I said, it was too expensive.
Understood. Doesn't have anything to do with this bit. Um, does anyone else have questions about what the applicant's proposed?
Um, well, I just have a question about the property.
Sure.
How wide is the, the addition, the garage?
Uh, 24 feet, I believe.
It is 24?
I believe so.
Can, you know, on the other, on the other side, the other garage that's now, um, it looks like in some of the pictures, you have cars parked in front of there.
That's correct. That's the current parking. That's our current driveway.
And how many, how many spaces can you have over there? Three, it looks like?
It's three across and then you can fit two behind there and then two more behind each other all the way down.
So you can stack them over there?
Yes.
And then with the additional parking over in front of the other garage, it sounds like you may have your amount of spaces.
If they're allowed to keep two curb cuts.
You may not have, allowed to have the other driveway.
Well, you can have the driveway, just not the curb cut. Oh, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the, um, the other picture that you had there. It looks like you wanted to widen that driveway space. It looks like you wanted to widen that driveway space.
That doesn't exist today.
That doesn't exist today.
Part of what was proposed with the garage was a new driveway. She's been to Public Works to get the driveway permit, and now is being told that they can't approve it in the fashion that it's being shown here.
Right. So, without that, without the widening of, off the garage, of the driveway space, would that a lot, enough space in between the two driveways, I guess, would be the question? If you just come straight out off of the garage, there would, looks like there'd be a substantial space between the two driveways.
I haven't actually measured it.
There probably would be a good amount of space, whether that would be compliant with regulatory requirements from Public Works, I'm not sure. Generally speaking, I think they want at least a minimum of 50 feet between driveways. Okay?
Yeah, definitely wouldn't be 50 feet.
Okay. Just trying to get a feel for it.
Yeah, I understand.
Ultimately, if the board does get to the point of wanting to take final action on this, we're gonna have to make it conditional on working out some kind of a parking situation with Public Works, and then having you guys...
What I was gonna suggest is, given, if we get to the point where the board wants to make a decision, I would actually recommend that you probably table at that stage, have her go to the zoning board, get the relief she needs from the zoning board, work out whatever issues there are with the driveway access with Public Works, and then come back to the board with a revised plan that, with compliance of, yes, we know we can do this at this size because the zoning board granted the variance, and we've worked out the issues with Public Works, so here's what they're allowing us to do. So, the board has a clear idea, because quite frankly, I'd rather you not delegate something like this to staff to try to determine whether or not it's compliant with your wishes or not.
I understand.
I agree with not delegating it to staff. I think that any solution with Public Works is gonna be sufficient for the swimming lessons. It's the seminar situation. And I don't know if you would be comfortable. I would consider some decision that said, whatever number of spaces you're permitted by Public Works is the limits that you have on your attendance at your conference, at your seminar. But if...
Ultimately, it's, do we have a final layout of the property? That's ultimately what I think the board needs in order to make a final decision. You'd need to have that layout before we could say, yes, it's got a final approval and you're back in compliance.
Fair enough, for my benefit.
And I did talk to Public Works, and they said that they were going to have some sort of input with you guys. I don't know if that happened or not, but...
No. They haven't yet, but they do regularly, and they do it in a timely way, so we would know that pretty quickly.
That was a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. I don't know where that is. Then we can certainly take a look. If you've got to get some relief from the zoning board for the ratio of the square footage of the business versus the rest of the house, that's something that you could take care of as well, between whenever we're here tonight and whenever we would look at this again.
The soonest you'd be able to get on a zoning board meeting would be the May meeting, which would be... May 30th.
May 30th is the last one, and then the second June meeting for us?
You could actually go to the first June meeting, assuming the first meeting in June is June 5th.
We would put it on the agenda, assuming that there was...
It would be either June 5th or June 19th would be the two June meetings.
But this is only to get the thing regularized. It's not saying you can't keep going.
We're not gonna move forward with enforcement action until there's a final decision made by the planning board.
You can keep swimming.
The way we, the way we do enforcement in my department, as long as you're attempting to come into compliance, we are not gonna push the issue any further until there's a final decision made one way or the other.
Could I ask one other question?
Yes, amazing.
Why, partly, I suppose, my own personal, having been, and I did drive up to your site today, I don't understand why you're not linking the new garage, which has obviously got something like an ADU above it, to the house. Now, you may say it's not in my business, and it probably isn't. But I was just thinking that if you did it, I mean, even if it's another sort of breezeway, you probably surely... Connect it, then most of the problem...
And your square footage counts, and you're not gonna...
Maybe, maybe not, because, because this has existed and out of compliance for as long as it has, that I think is the reason why, even if you add this, it's, per Robert's interpretation, I think even with the connection, I don't know that that would change his administrative decision.
Well, the interesting part about that is the place to challenge an administrative decision is also the zoning board. So, you get the same questions for the same people.
And to answer your question?
Yes.
Yes, we, we wanted that, but honestly, with the layout of the house, the way it exists, we couldn't figure out at the time...
I wondered that.
How to connect that.
Yeah, I sort of thought that.
We have a couple of ideas that we may do later, but, yeah.
All right.
At the time, we couldn't think of that.
The house said where the kitchen sink is or something.
Well, all right, I'm not gonna challenge you. I just looked at it. I mean, I walked up and down the site with, no, I didn't trespass, but I just had a look, and I thought, why doesn't she link the two together? But I take your point. It's none of my business, anyway.
So, I wanted to note that the application you filled out also had that Friday 10:00 PM on it. So, I wanna make sure that Tim corrects it there as well, since that's part of the record. Are there other questions by members of the board? Okay, let's take a little public testimony from abutters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in. Are there any abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Please come forward. Mrs. Karen, can you allow them to use the table?
Yes.
Take your time to settle in and sign in on the clipboard, then when you're ready. Be even faster to do two at a time. Here are two people. Could you make sure that microphone's close to you? I can see the lights on from here, so I know that it's on.
Yeah, good evening. My name's Joan Cardillo. My husband, Tony. We are the owners of 11 Collins Avenue, directly across the street from this property that you're talking about, the application for a home occupation permit. Some of the stuff we were not aware of, that she changed as far as her application, the information that you have as far as hours, et cetera. But I will read what I handed in to Timothy.
Yeah, very good.
As is, not taking into account some of the changes she has in the hours.
No worries. You don't have to be nervous. We're nice people.
I'm sorry, I am nervous. Anyway, this is just our input regarding this home occupation permit. The Brick Mill Park development is off of the main road of Wire Road, and the traffic pattern of the roadway and the residence is being in a somewhat circular configuration. This residential area, R1, and Aquafire Conservation District is considered family and children-friendly and quiet. We're concerned that this type of home occupation business that has clients coming and going as early as 7:00 AM on some days and as late as 8:00 PM or, and 10:00 PM on other days. Again, that's a change. As stated on the application for home-occupied business could be an intrusion on the privacy, quietude, and family life of neighbors and the neighborhood. We're concerned about the possible decreased property values and desirability to purchase across from, across from or near this type of home occupation business. Who wants to have, looking at pavement and a huge, big building? Anyway, at times, there's been three to four cars parked on the street, and we are also concerned about entering and exiting from the driveway across the street, especially when backing back out into the street to avoid these cars that are parked there. We're also concerned that if approval of this type of home occupation business is allowed in this residential area, R1 and Aquafire Conservation District, it may open the possibility of other similar-type businesses requests. And we know that home businesses are allowed in residential areas. And we're talking about this particular type. It may open the, for similar-type business requests with similar client traffic, parking, and hours of operation, and that may build large imposing structures that may deter from the aesthetics and the character of the neighborhood. Based on the above, we believe that this type of home occupation business is not suitable for the residential area mentioned above, and therefore ask this board not to grant approval for this type of home, this type of home occupation business at this location. And we had just another concern regarding it, which we didn't know the answer to. Would this application for a home occupation business be, if it's approved on this location, would it be passed on to future owners? Or does it end when they end?
I can, no, they don't, they don't pass on to future owners. They end with the current...
But all of the pavement and the, everything would still be there?
That's true, although I wanted to mention some of the things that exist and some of what's under construction and some of what's proposed. The building that she's building now, the garage thing, she's allowed to have that with her, without the business.
Of course.
And so could the buyer, obviously, could continue to have that, and they'll have a pool in the other garage if, continues to be there if she sold the house. So, they're allowed to have all of those structures. There isn't any part of a home occupation that is the construction of something new for the business. Home occupations are supposed to fit into the existing residence and be a part of it.
The coming and going of people, and the parking of people, and then coming and leaving.
Legitimate concern, and we're gonna talk to her some more about that. I was just thinking about the buildings and the construction, because that was some of the things that she raised. But in terms of suggesting or wondering whether the next business that comes along, and indoor swimming is pretty rare. I don't think we'd have another one of those, but yoga class or something like that would have the same kind of thing.
It's really an admirable business. I just, it doesn't seem the type of business to be in residential area.
It's certainly unusual, but it does, well, the board consider...
It's a very important thing to have, but it's just, it's very unusual to be in a residential...
The concern you have about a business, a similar business building big structures, though, is one that I can allay your fears a little bit, because the business part of it wouldn't be allowed to permit, to build buildings to support the business. What she's building there today, she's allowed to have, got nothing to do with the business.
So, that will have nothing to do with the business?
Yeah. And if people wanna build those, we, you know, frankly, have regulations that allow them, and state law that allows auxiliary dwelling units, and as long as you're within your setbacks, which is 30 feet from the street there. And complies with those. You know, you could add it, they could add it, the neighbor could add it, you know. If I put a two-car garage with a pool table above it, and I have all my buddies come every Saturday night, I don't need anybody's permission to do that, and they can park right on the street, so.
So, as long as it's not part of the business, that's fine.
Understood. Tony, you had something that you wanted to add?
Yeah, I do. I mean, this is a lot worse than we thought. Just based on the discussion that you guys had in the last half an hour, I'm very surprised that, you know, in a residential zone like that, we're talking about parking garage for seven, for five, 10 cars on all spaces in a residential area where kids are playing around. Where, you know, where the only people going in that residential area is the people living there. There's no side street, there is no, there's no through streets there. There's only two entrances, one entrance one side, one entrance the other side. I'm surprised that you allow this kind of a business. And we're not, I think that this kind of business might be on a, you know, on a main road. But in a residential area, plus, I can see a tax service business. When you don't have clients coming in and out, especially with the hours of 7:00 o'clock and 10:00 at night?
It's not a night.
8:00 PM. She changed her hours to correct that a little bit, but...
To what? From what to what?
8:00 PM is the latest.
It's the latest, even 8:00 PM. I mean, 7:00, from what, 6:00, 7:00 in the morning, 8:00 at night, that's a long time. A long time to open for a business. I mean, even a business on a residential, on a commercial zone, then it opened that often, for that kind of time. Plus, you know, the car going in and out, the 10 people at a time, even the seminar with 10 people, they could be about...
Mrs. Karen, you don't need to. You'll get your chance when they're done.
I just have a question for them.
There would be also, there would be...
We'll save it a little bit.
Yeah, there would be, there would be a lot of cars going in and out of the place now, plus, then...
One at a time. Somebody would come at 7:00 and park in the driveway and go swimming, and at 9:00, they'd switch to the next person.
Well, first of all, there is one car coming in and then going out, and then there is, there is another car coming in and going out because of the change of the, every hour as they're scheduled.
Every hour or two, a car comes and goes. It's pretty normal for a residential neighborhood.
Every hour within five to 10 minutes at the hour, there will be four times people going in and out.
I'm not sure four. Maybe one leaving and one coming.
One coming in and going out, and the other one coming in and going out because the change of the, of the hours. At 7:00, I'm, I have, I have between 7:00 and 8:00. At 8:00, I have to go in, pick up whatever left, and leave, and the other person has to drive in and then leave at the same time.
Oh, you're presuming that parents are dropping their kids off and then coming back later?
Of course they are. This is a residential area. Have you, you guys, you said you drove by there. How many guys have you met while driving in that road?
I didn't meet any.
Right, right.
I was there in the middle of the afternoon.
Listen, I do not, we do not live there. We own the property, we do not live there. And I applaud for the rest of the business. I'm just concerned the board allow this kind of, you know, complex business to be in a residential area, and the problem about you involved.
I appreciate your concerns, and the traffic is something the board's gonna have to have a discussion some more with the applicant and take a look at and understand more about the comings and goings. Some of the types of home occupation businesses are very, very similar in terms of the traffic pattern. A hair salon, for example, or a nail salon, or some shop that fixes some whatever doodads. People come, people go, and they drop off, and they exchange, or tutoring kids, daycare for kids. I mean, there's any number of things that are, that have very, very similar traffic patterns that are just really common home businesses.
I agree, but this is, we're talking about the type of development. If you are on a main road, yes, you can go in and out because the traffic goes in and out all the time. But this is a very residential, strict residential area. We owned this place for 45 years. It's been so quiet, nobody, nobody ever goes in and out of the place, because you can't.
Their business has been going for eight years.
But also suspending it, but probably people, because we have heard about it, there was before somebody else baking cookie. Well, baking cookie. Plus, we didn't realize that there was no, there was no license or permit applied to this thing.
But the quiet neighborhood that you've been talking about has been, the business has been there for eight years.
The pavement situation now, now it's a lot more expand, it's a lot big business than she ever had for the last, whatever, number of years.
I think we're gonna have to talk more about the pavement and the parking and learn more about what DW will approve. It won't be the thing that's on the plan with the full 24 plus another 24 feet of curb cut. That would be too much.
We appreciate your looking into that.
I understand. The comings and goings is always the issue for the neighbors with home occupations is, you know, how much traffic does it add? How many people does it add? Generally speaking, the kinds of things that are permitted don't add a whole lot, but let's talk about it some more. Thank you for your testimony.
Yep. We also have the other letter, Mr. Chairman, from Mr. Loether.
Let me read that one. So, you've read your letter into the record, so it's here in writing as well. We've got that on file. I have an email from James Loether dated Tuesday, April 17th, 2018. To the planning board, I'm writing this letter to formally express my concerns. Is that Tim? Concern regarding the proposed home occupation permit for a swimming instruction business at 12 Collins Avenue. I own a home two doors down from the property and am completely against allowing a business in this neighborhood. I anticipate that in allowing this business, traffic will increase in a densely populated neighborhood. There are many children and others who jog, walk, bike, and play on our street. I feel the increased traffic will jeopardize the safety and quality of life for all who live in the residential neighborhood. The building that was recently constructed on the property would appear to be too close to the road, and the abutting property line, it is larger than the actual house. I'm not sure how that building was permitted to be built in a residential community and has most likely detracted from the value of other homes in the street. I have been in the same house for 32 years on Collins Avenue, and this business has been the most disconcerting development that we've had to deal with. I urge you to take all of this into consideration when deciding on permitting the business. Sincerely, Jim Loether. The only thing that I would add or offer or comment to bond with this is that third paragraph about the building too close to the road and all of that is not germane to the consideration before us. And I think we also have affirmation from the department that it is within its setbacks inappropriate. That's what we have for public testimony. If there's no other items in writing or other citizens who wish to weigh in, we'll close the public hearing and allow Ms. Karen to respond to anything that she heard in the testimony that she'd like to respond to, discuss. Please, you have the floor.
I just wanted to respond to the testimony of 11 Collins Avenue.
Okay.
The owners do not live there. The owners do not live there and the people who do live there have definitely more vehicles than we do. I was not aware that there was an issue with, uh, the parking situation. We're very friendly with them and I have no doubt that they would come out and say, hey, there's an issue here. Um, waved to them and talked to them every day and an issue has never been brought up. Everybody who comes to my place is either currently or has been a parent. They are very aware that it's a residential neighborhood. I actually inform people of that before they come in and I ask them to kindly respect the residential neighborhood. Nobody speeds, there's no smoking on the property, there's no loud music swearing, there's nothing that would disrupt the neighborhood and there have never been any issues. There have never been any tickets, accidents, close calls, anything. And again, I, I want to just reiterate, the building that we have just built has nothing to do with the business.
Understood. Um, thank you for responding to those items. Um, we'll take those under consideration. Any other questions or comments from members of the board about what the applicant's proposed?
Well, I'm just looking at the two, one that's been very kindly presented by Tony and Joan and the other one that, from Mr. Loether, which you read. Both of these, if I've got it right, and I'd like to be corrected if I'm wrong, both of these people do not apparently live in Collins Avenue. What?
No, if they own property, though, they certainly have the right to-
I'm not saying you don't have a right to make the comment.
No, they said they don't, but they thought the other one did.
The other one does.
Mr.-
The other one, uh, was, uh, two doors down.
Two doors down. He, he does live there. Okay. I just wanted clarification.
And can I clarify on the traffic? Occasionally, I do have a student who is brought by a parent and then another parent will show up later, but honestly, I, I can't control that.
No.
You know, if, if a parent wants to come and witness their child learning how to swim and they can't come in the same car, honestly, I can't control that.
Understood. Um, how long have you go, have you been there doing the business?
Uh, the business has been open, it'll be seven years in September.
Okay, so I had to say eight before, I was wrong a little bit.
Yes, I spent a year, um, doing research and-
Yeah. Um, this letter that I read from Mr. Loether also seems to, from some of the things that he describes, anticipate in allowing this business that traffic will increase in a densely populated neighborhood suggests that he may not have been aware that you had been operating the business for seven years. Um, as you would say, we've already got traffic and I think it's a problem and it drives me crazy every Saturday morning or whatever that might be.
And, Mr. Chairman, if he's been in the house for 32 years, I'd have thought he'd have made a comment about a business been running for seven years.
With signs out front.
With the signs out front, yeah. I do, I just don't understand.
So, Ms. Karen, are you expecting to expand your business or increase the number of people that would be coming to see you or is this strictly just being-
Not at the current location. If I do want to expand, I know that I need to go to a commercial property and I would not do that in a residential neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Other comments or questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Um, the garage has a little thing in the corner that I can't read the print on. Um, it's in the upper right-hand corner and, um, I don't know what that little thing is.
In the proposed or the existing?
Proposed, something.
Does, does it matter, to be honest with you? Because it's not associated with the business.
Well, I'm curi- I'm curious about what the, the, why the garage is where it is. I guess that's really the-
Just proposed area four and I can't read the second line.
What's that?
So, the, the piece in the corner, Nelson, is a bathroom on the second floor.
Oh.
The proposed area says geothermal loop, that was the thing I read a lot more.
On the geothermal, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Why was the garage sited so far forward on the property? Is there?
It, it was sited that far forward, honestly, because my husband hates to snow blow and he wants the smallest driveway possible.
That makes a very good assumption.
Okay, that's legitimate. I just didn't know if there was some other future plan here that we didn't quite yet see, okay?
No, there's no future plan to expand that building.
The other thing I would say to you is as you negotiate the new driveway configurations that are coming and going here, that you consider the, somebody said, making a parking lot out of the front yard and try and make it look as nearly residential as you can. I know you got to pave some area, but I'd hate to see that whole front yard get paved because that would solve your problem in one area.
Right. And, and after speaking with you folks and after speaking with the highway department, what we've decided to do is the old driveway is going away. It's actually going to be lawn.
Yeah.
The new driveway, what we'll do is propose to the highway department that we have the parking spaces off that driveway, but with no street access. So they will actually access the parking spaces through our new driveway in front of the new garage. So there will actually be more lawn with the new driveway than there is now.
Okay, I encourage that.
Yes.
I think that's something to think about. It looked like it was going to be a lot of pavement here from these sketches and, yeah, okay.
Yeah, not after the conversation with them and then what we will have is a, um, a walkway in between the parking spaces to the front door of the business owner.
Yeah.
Yep. So there will be more lawn, so.
So when you do the-
It won't be all green.
When you, when you do that, I think that's a, a pretty good layout. Hard to see it without it being on paper in front of me, but-
Right.
The three, uh, two, three, whatever spaces you do to the right of your new garage that you access by pulling directly in front of the garage, there'll be a little bit of grass between that pavement to the side and the street because-
Correct.
Um, think about, you know, some bushes or landscapes or something that kind of blocks the view of those cars a little bit or does something to, um, again, like Nelson said, don't, don't make it look like a parking lot in your front yard.
Right. Actually, the neighbor's parking lot, as you noted before, is more like a parking lot than ours is going to be.
Yes, I agree. It is.
Um, I think that you're right about that, although they're not before us and shouldn't be picked on. Um, so then, my, my impression, my opinion of the nature of your business is that it's a suitable business for home occupations and very similar to the kind of traffic flow that we've talked about before with other things, with the exception of these seminars. Um, and if the seminars are reduced in size to fit into whatever parking you're able to work out, I think that I can understand a couple of hours a night once a month for four months. Certainly not a huge burden and probably no similar than the average house at a dinner party. Um, I don't know what that number will be when you work with the Department of Public Works for figuring out what will really fit there and how they would have to stack and maneuver, but, um, other than that, I don't think that you'll get to 10, but you'll have some number that may work for you. Um, that's my personal opinion. If others want to weigh in or offer any thoughts on, you know.
Hmm, I'll sit.
Um, I was, went, ahead of our meeting tonight, when I saw the application, I was thinking 10 PM was kind of late.
Yeah.
But fixing it to 8 PM offered a lot of, um, uh, relief for that concern. Um, do you have, how often do you have students that want to start at seven?
I have one person who comes on Monday and Friday at 7:00 AM. He comes from 7:00 to 8:00 AM.
So during the weekdays in that time, you're not going to have that 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM, you're not going to have students because they're in school. So, I mean, they're not going to have kids.
I, I don't have kids, correct. I have older adults.
Okay.
Yeah, and as far as teen drivers, I have one right now. So they're all older adults who are very, you know, cognizant of it being in a residential neighborhood.
The ones that overlap with school hours where we know there wouldn't be any school-age kids coming is something that we could rely on for decision-making. In terms of the number of teenage drivers or something like that, that can change-
Right.
-based on who wants to enroll in your class, so.
Right. I mean, I have two kids from down the street who walk to my facility, so then there's no cars.
So, in terms of what the planning board would look at, ultimately, all that matters is you get them off the street. And so if you've got them off, if you've got enough parking spaces to put everybody off the street in a nice, safe place, um, you know, mission accomplished. Um, the parking spaces that you have by the street, I don't know if in your new garage there's any sort of, um, motion sensor light or something, but getting to 8:00 PM in January, well past dark.
Yes.
So I don't know if you've got any kind of lighting sorted out for that.
We have lighting on the front and the side of the garage and our plan is once the new walkway is in, that will be lit also. And then there will be lights on the front of the house and on the front of the studio where the swimming occurs.
Okay. Okay. Excellent. Any other questions or comments? So, Tim, should we, is there any decisions that we can make on some of the things now or should we wait on it all for the parking or?
That's, that's ultimately up to you. I mean, if you feel comfortable with what she's described as being worked out with Public Works, you know, you could grant conditional approval based on the compliance of the zoning and meeting the requirements of Public Works for the driveway access. If you're, if you're not, then I would suggest, there's two ways you could go about it. You could table indefinitely, which would require a re-notification once they go to the ZBA, or you could pick either June 5th or June 19th after the zoning board meeting to have a continued public hearing.
I was tending to follow your lead in suggesting that we not make a final decision until we hear from Public Works. I just was thinking, is there anything that we can do to avoid a complete rehearing of everything in June?
Not in a public hearing, you can't, no. Is any buter who comes at the second public hearing?
Oh, sure, for the, for a buter.
But in terms of, I, the, the two comments that we have as staff right now, assuming they're addressed as part of the revisions to this and appropriate zoning board relief, then we would not have those repeated when we come back.
Okay. What's the rule of the board? Do you want to go or?
Mr. Chairman, I personally would be happy to grant conditional approval on this, subject to ratification by the ZBA and by Public Works Department to get the agreement on the things that we've talked about. But quite honestly, otherwise, I think this, given particularly that this business has been there, has not annoyed everybody, I personally think we should grant conditional approval.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Um, okay, so the only-
Just to make sure, you're including both of the proposed conditions from Robert regarding signage and the size.
We've already had the applicant-
Again, until it's, until it's done, it's still a condition we need to-
It's got to be there, correct.
And then the third would be, uh, approval from DPW regarding driveway access.
That's right.
And her seminars are limited to whatever cars she could fit in that configured driveway.
Yep.
Um, is there a second for Alastair's motion?
Second.
Second by Neil. Any discussion?
I also want to clarify that it is, the hours of operations are one Saturday.
One Saturday per month.
Per month.
That's correct, is what she said.
Well, it says, and Saturdays, eight to one. And what she has said is one Saturday, and I want to make sure that that is one Saturday.
That is correct, one Saturday.
Okay.
So just clarify that.
Happy to include that in there, Lynn. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Okay, so that's in your motion, is that consistent with your second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
He's got the second, he's got the-
Oh, he's got to approve it, sorry. Yes.
Neil is the second.
Neil is the second.
Uh, any further discussion? Okay, all of them, all in favor of the motion to grant conditional final approval, subject to conditions in the memo and the ones added here tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six, zero, zero, so you have your approval.
Thank you.
The town will give you a note, a letter that has the conditions that you have to meet in order for it to be a final approval.
Rub a stamp.
You're going to have to go to the zoning board and you're going to have to get the driveway worked out with DPW and those are kind of the biggies. You've already agreed to take one of the signs down, so.
Yes.
There'll be a decision later outlining this in the next day or so.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item-
Oh.
Seven, on our agenda's discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern. Um, I'm reminded of three items by the staff. One is, um, boy, we collected a lot of surveys at the polls.
Did you?
Two hundred and forty?
Roughly 240.
Thirty-nine? Um, the poll where I was at didn't do as well as the other two where nobody was at, so apparently asking people-
Hey, hey, hey!
Asking people to fill it out.
No, people were at, I mean-
There were 115 at St. John Newman's.
The other two polling places ran out and mine did not.
Um, uh, Mike Redding.
Yeah, Mike, Mike was at there for a while and-
Was at James News and, and people were interested.
Yes, they were.
Yeah.
Tom did a fantastic job most of the day, but I, I filled in when I could.
Either way, um, 200-plus responses, one way or another, is, is great information. It's a good start.
People were interested.
Um, the survey is also posted on the town's website. Tim has tweeted about it or?
There has been one post on it about, on the department's Twitter feed. It was on election day or the day before that I tweeted about that, uh, let people know that they could do it online. We haven't seen anybody turn one in from online. Uh, I'll be taking that down shortly because NRPC is actually in the midst of doing the analysis and what we've received to this point, so if we get anything else, we'll certainly add it to whatever, uh, analysis is being done, but I'd like to get NRPC, well, I've already told them to go ahead and start working on what we've got, so.
So I think that we'll get some interesting results. I know from talking to people, a lot of people who came and talked about it were more interested in whatever street they lived on than D, than DW Highway. They wanted to know, when are you going to do Turkey Hill or Amherst or Wilson Hill or, or somewhere else? And usually telling a story about where they ride or where they see people ride or whatever. Um, the one that I thought was particularly interesting, I mentioned it to the staff, is apparently there's a, a really high volume of bicycles on Wilson Hill Road during the summer on weekends. And it's kind of a riding group that goes up and down there and I couldn't think of a more narrow, less amenable placement. I guess it gets from point A to point B wherever they do their loop.
Rather good, cool bike ride.
Yeah, it's the New Hampshire Wheelmen, I believe, are the ones that do that route.
Um, and the other interesting thing, Mr. Chairman, was that two or three people at St. John Newman's particularly lambasted the fact that we didn't put sidewalks the full length of Tinker Road. No further comment.
Fair enough.